Hi, how are you? I am well, thank you. Yes, I am. Absolutely. One zero.
One zero.
Right now, here. Okay.
You're trying to...
Welcome, everyone. Before we begin, we will have a prayer led by Councilman Kimna followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we come to you this evening grateful that we can come together as one body to serve you and this city. We pray for wisdom for the many decisions we face now and that will come our way. We ask that you continue to guide the leaders of this city, this country, and all those around the world, that their decisions reflect you and what you've called us to do. We ask your blessings on the many still suffering from the effects and aftermaths of the tornado and floods, that they soon can find relief. Continue to watch over the many that protect this city and this country, and for all the intentions that are left unsaid. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome, everyone. I will now call to order the October 7th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Here.
Tinsley.
Present.
Hussey.
Kimna.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Item three, is there a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Before we have item four, I would like to recognize any scouts that we have in the audience tonight. I believe we have one here with us. Welcome, we're glad to have you here tonight. And if you'd like to come up to the podium and tell us your name and what school you attend.
Hi, I'm Jack Callahan. I am a part of Troop 104 and I go to St. Joseph Cathedral School, and I'm finishing up my Communications Mayor Badge.
Wonderful, great job. Glad to have you here tonight. Welcome. Item four, we have miscellaneous agenda items, presentation of Project Homeless Connect Day proclamation, and we have with us the planning committee and volunteers. So I'd like to invite Ms. Ann Stratman and the group that's here this evening to the podium. And you're welcome to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about Project Homeless Connect Day.
Mayor, council. My name is Edwin Cooper, and I'm the Chair of the Fifth Annual Project Homeless Connect, and I'll let the other members in. With Chair, with Committee Chair.
I'm Amy Rogers, and I am the Media Co-Chair.
I'm Ann Stratman, and I am assisting on the Services Committee.
I am Randy Kimker, and I'm the Services Chair.
I am Reverend W.T. Edmondson, and I'm the Co-Fundraising Chair.
And I'm Reverend Karen Taylor, and I'm the other Co-Chair of Fundraising.
As I said, Mayor, Project Homeless Connect is a national model. This is the fifth year that we've done it in Jefferson City. We got a lot of great support from the three churches downtown, First Baptist, First Christian, and First United Methodist Church. We have a lot of community partners, the City of Jefferson, Pathways, Compass Health, Community Health Center, Code County. It's a lot of numerous people that's working a long time to get these done. And Project Homeless Connect is basically, is a one-day event. It's not like at Health Fair, hopefully we give the tools for a person that has experienced homelessness or homelessness, which they need to be successful. So it's application for housing, it's medical care, ID, birth certificate, a lot of different other things. So we're proud of all of the community partners, and I'm definitely proud of the great co-chairs. Boy, this was a challenging year this year, but I think we're all pros at it, so at least I think we are.
Well, we appreciate your work in the community. And tell us, for this event on October 18th, if people want to either donate services or get involved, how can they communicate with you to do that?
Good point. That's one of the most important things. What is the website? Because we still accept the volunteers, because we need, in essence, with Project Homeless Connect, is if we call them guests. If a person comes in, we try to pair them with a tour guide to develop a relationship and help that person experience homelessness. So that's why we need so many volunteers, and you can volunteer for a two-hour block, and it is...
We are at the Jefferson City Project Homeless Connect. It's a Weebly site, so if you do a Google search on Jefferson City Project Homeless Connect, and then there is a sign-up icon on the very front page, and just click on that, and there's a number of different positions that you can volunteer for. We have it broken down into two-hour time slots. You can volunteer for two hours or for an entire day. So there's lots of different options. If you are, if there's anybody out there that's not able to walk, or is not very mobile, has any kind of mobility issues, we have some sitting jobs. So there's many options.
And always accept donations, and that information is financial in particular.
Yes, you can make the checks out to First United Methodist Church, and it could be mailed either to the church or to PO Box 1407, Jefferson City.
Well, thank you all. We hope to gain a lot of support. I know every year this event grows and grows, and we appreciate all the effort and community volunteers. And I have a special proclamation this evening, and one of the whereas states that "The homelessness task force comprised of members of the faith community, community service agencies, and concerned citizens desires to partner with city government and local officials." And therefore, I declare October 18th as Project Homeless Connect Day, and we hope that all of our citizens will strive to end homelessness in our community. So thank you for all you do. And before we take a picture, I'll ask, does council have any questions about the event? Of course, we're all invited to come. Councilman Graham?
I just want to say thank you to this committee for what you do. I've been involved with Project Homeless Connect the first year and the second year, and I want to say thank you for what you do. So many times in life, we take things for granted, to whether we could be up here one day, and the next day we may need these services. So I would like to encourage each one of our council members to please join this group in volunteering for the services that we do on the 18th. And just thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. Well, if you would like to come forward, and council will come up here and we'll take a picture with the proclamation, we'll share it.
All right, got it. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
Item B, tonight we have a very special resolution, RS 2019-11. Mrs. Donaldson.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson recognizing David Williams as 2019 Outstanding Employee.
Mr. Cole.
The Outstanding Employee recognition is a significant recognition of the city. Nominations are solicited, and prior employees recipients of the award are involved in the selection process. I thought I would read the comments as I presented them at the employee meeting, so at the end, act surprised like you don't know who it is. So, "This employee is trusted by their coworkers and does the right thing for the right reason. Their employment with the city started over 25 years ago in an entry-level position that they have continued to work their way through the ranks with continued training and educational opportunities to, not only for the city betterment, but also betterment of the employee as well. This person is well-known with coworkers and other departments around the city. They work well with all departments, are friendly and helpful, and represent their department well within the organization. This employee is active in multiple federal and state associations representing both the department and the city. Over 25-year career in law enforcement, this employee has served as an undercover..."
And the other signal.
Oh, I thought that was mine.
But now that you're up here, no, 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 you're armed, you come stand right here. I didn't want you to... So this is going to be a real big surprise for...
I'm trying to lose weight.
"Over their 25-year career in law enforcement, this employee has served as an undercover officer, an accident reconstructionist, a motorcycle officer, and has been a member and commander of the department SWAT team. He has also served as a field training officer, a defensive tactics trainer, and coordinated the department's reserve officers. This officer is a graduate of the FBI National Academy and was selected to serve a six-month of detail as an executive fellow with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives in Washington, DC. He is a peer reviewer for the Bureau of Justice Affairs Grant Process and is a certified instructor in explosive investigations, TASER, and pursuit driving. Over the last year, this employee has appeared on TVs across the country due to the high-profile case and the recent tornado in the city. Each time, this employee displayed compassion, composure, calmness, and honesty while showing the country the City of Jefferson was acting swiftly and appropriately to handle the recent disaster situations. This employee's ability to handle questions directed at him by the media was outstanding. Recently, this employee was recognized for his service by the U.S. Attorney for the Western District of Missouri and given the 2019 Enoch B. Moreland Award. On a personal note, this employee is a past member of the Board of Directors of First United Credit Union, currently serves on boards of River Region Credit Union, the Local American Red Cross, and the Special Learning Center. He is also a member of the local Elks Lodge and serves as a guardian for the Committee on the Central Missouri Honor Flight. He has been very active in working with and writing and visiting our partner city in Germany, recently returning from a trip to Germany and Greece. I am also informed that he has participated in parades in our partner city. And rumor has it that there is photographic evidence of being in Leierhosen, but that's just a rumor. I'm not, I can't confirm that, but there may be some truth to that. So please join me in recognizing the Outstanding Employee for 2019, Police Lieutenant Dave Williams."
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Williams. And at this time, we have a resolution on the floor. Is there a motion to accept this resolution, approve the resolution?
So moved.
All right. And I will also note that this is cosponsored by all of the city council members. So is there any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous. So congratulations, it's an honor to recognize you, Lieutenant Williams, and we have the special resolution I'd like to present to you in city coin. And like Steve said, your service to the city over many years has been exceptional. Pardon me? Cardinals won? And Cardinals won. So I know you were checking your phone to see, so we could just tell you that...
Not quite, but okay.
Okay, that's right. I forget the team, but you, anyway. We chose you, anyway. We're just so thrilled. I have to say, and I have traveled across the world with you and Stephanie, and I appreciate the leadership you've taken on our partnership city as well. You've been a great ambassador for us beyond Jefferson City. When people come here from Menschburg, you and Stephanie have welcomed them. And when we went for the first time this year, we were amazed at how many friends you have over there in Germany, in our partnership city. Also brought you to my mom's hometown and my grandparents' hometown, and we were able to visit there. And it was interesting, because they already knew you, because they had seen you in the news reports. So it's not just here, it's actually international that you were seen. And you really guided our city through a time that was like a time we had never experienced in our city's history, and there was a lot of uncertainty, especially in those very early hours. And you were able to take charge and make all of us feel confident that you knew what was going on, and that we knew what was going on through you. And how many people watched those news reports, and how many comments I had specifically for your leadership during that time. And I know you received this award for countless years, and many, many years that have culminated in this award, but most recently, you led us through a time that we're very thankful that we had you in that position. And I wish I could count the number of times that people talked about that really big police officer that they saw on TV, that big guy, tall guy, I mean, you know, and how many comments I had about you. And I know that council would echo those comments as well. Does council have anything to add at this time? And I know that we have a resolution, so I'll go ahead and present this, but we also have some other special guests that would like to say a few words. But I'm going to start with this resolution. Hasn't been signed yet, because we have to make sure it passes, but you will have my signature and the city seal tomorrow on there. And I would like to present this to you with the council coming up here. And if you would like to bring Stephanie, and then after that, I'd like to get the entire police department crew that's here as well.
I will just say that Stephanie was worried, because I didn't write anything down. And that's not normal, that I have nothing to say. But going back to the award, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that I didn't expect it. I was doing the job that I was selected to do by the chief, by my coworkers, and then by the coworkers of the city. I cannot take credit for the problems that we've had, and how we as a city have taken those problems head-on. It's not just me. There was people from Public Works, there's people from the Fire Department, there's people from here in City Hall that made things happen to where we could make things happen for our citizens. So although I accept the award and thank you all for unanimously giving it to me, I want to make sure that everyone out there understands that it's not one person, it's all of us working together, and that is how we can accomplish so many things. And I can't say not, my mother is here.
Oh.
Janine Rowe. She takes a lot of credit. I didn't listen all the time.
Welcome.
My brother Jason is in the back. I talk about him a lot, because he deserves it.
Come on up.
Come here, Steph. Most of you know my wife Stephanie, she was a former police officer with us. She is the bashful one, so I don't know if we're going to get her up here or not. As I look out, I also see a group from River Region, the Credit Union supported me. One of the things that I learned early on about Jeff City is, even if you're not from here, you're never going to be from here. But people accept you, and they realize that what you can do to benefit the community, and they've done an awesome job of helping me see some things that I had not otherwise seen. So Rick and the crew from River Region, thank you very much. Pivot. And there's a group right back here. There's a large group, because you may know the guy that used to be a councilman.
Yes, welcome.
That family took me in, because 27 years ago, when I came to Jeff City, I didn't know anything about it. Kathy is a former lead operator for the police department, and one of the first people that actually explained to me how Jefferson City works. And over that time, the family has continued to support me and help us through raising two kids. Nicholas and Mercedes aren't here, but I know they're happy for me as well, because they are a part of it all. So thank you.
That was very well said. And before you leave, I would like to call up our special guest. We have Dave Griffith, our state representative. So we'd like to call Dave forward. He has something he'd like to present to you as well.
Yeah. Thanks, Dave.
I have to lower this. I do want to tell you that Dave has been a real good friend of mine for a long, long, long time. There are people that I've met in this community, as I've lived here for 33 years, but people I've met in this community, they really, really stand out. And Dave Williams is one of those people. Dave Williams stands in the gap when we need somebody like him. Being in the media for over 20 years, I can tell you that, I was checking around to see if there are any TV stations here, there are not, but I can tell you that when you are being interviewed by the media, they can be very gruesome. And I was able to watch a lot of the interviews that you did. And being able to stay on point, and being able to give the information that's needed, but not giving more information that is not needed at that time. And you did an outstanding job of that. And being able to be recognized, not only in our community, but being able to be recognized throughout the entire state of Missouri, and throughout the country, and even worldwide. You're hot. I mean, you are definitely... But one of the honors that I have of being a state representative is being able to present you with a resolution that is signed by the Speaker of the House. And there's a lot of whereasses and all that kind of stuff, and therefor's and all that that's on there. And you can read this when you get home, but it's an honor to be able to present this to you. On behalf of the House of Representatives, and on behalf of the state of Missouri, we are proud of you, we are proud of what you do for us, and as a law enforcement officer, and putting your life on the line for us, and we cannot thank you enough. You indeed are a man of honor. It's an honor to be able to...
I'll picture, I guess.
We will definitely get a picture. We also have Rudy Veet, our other state representative here, so I know that he, we should, we'll bring him forward. He wanted to be here this evening in person to congratulate you as well, on behalf of his district as well.
Congratulations, and I won't echo what everybody says about your talents and your skills and your humility and your dedication, but I will tell you, in our neck of the woods, my mother would say, "He's a great person." That's what we consider people that are just all-around good and not selfish.
Congratulations. And I also have, from our state Senator, Mike Bernskeeter has also presented a resolution. So Rudy and David, why don't we, we'll start with the pictures with our state proclamations, and then we'll have council come up, and then we'll have family and everybody. So we'll start with this.
All right.
Congratulations. I'll present the resolution that has passed and received. Yes, if your family, why don't we get your family up here as well, mom? We got the city coin and the copy of the resolution. Does anyone else need to come up? Okay, now why don't we get also your police department's family? Everybody, police officers, chief?
Yeah, come on. No. Wait till the next tour. Yeah, you're a little heavy on this side. Just go on over here. Got it. All right, I'm coming to the front.
Also, I do want to thank Lee Griffith for being here as well, David's husband...
I'm a bashful.
Or David's wife, gosh, I'm sorry.
Got it.
David Griffith's wife.
Mind if I get your good side?
Dave Williams, where is Dave? Is he still here? Okay. One more fact that was brought to my attention is that apparently when we posted on the city's Facebook page, you apparently broke Facebook because you received a record 912 likes when you received this award and 262 comments and 106 shares. So I think you've officially beat the mayor or anything we've ever put out there. So according to city staff, you're kind of a big deal, David. Congratulations again. Any last comments? All right. Congratulations. Thank you again for your service. We appreciate you. Thank you. All right. Item five, we have no public hearings. Item six, no appointments this evening. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. We would like to call the chamber to the podium, Mr. Randy Allen. And I asked Randy to come and give us some information. There is a survey out there, so how can we participate?
It's really, really easy. And I do want to tell you that as of today, we're about 1,200 responses to our survey, which we were hoping for 1,000. So I'm here to say that now we're hoping for 2,000. So pass the word. It's easy. There's a website dedicated... Thank you. There's a website dedicated to this strategy process that began obviously about three weeks ago. So it's jcmostrategy.com. So just go on that front page and there's two places there that says "Take Survey." And there's been disagreement about how long the survey takes. I guess it depends upon your IQ or something, but not true. So it's anywhere from...
I'm talking to you Carlos. I don't know.
Schreiber, Schreiber, I was thinking about how high your IQ was. So it'll take two minutes for you. Eight to... Five to eight minutes is all it takes. And we think that this will be a big importance to us as we move ahead with this strategy. So jcmostrategy.com. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you Randy.
Does council have any questions? Great. And I've taken the survey. It's very easy and it's for everyone in the community to take that, so... And beyond, even those who have any connection, work here, come into town to visit. We want to get as many surveys and information out there as possible. So thank you Randy. And I understand also tomorrow's the chamber's annual business expo as well.
Oh yes.
Right. So we hope that...
Capital Plaza Hotel.
At Capital Plaza. What are the hours of that?
It starts right after the awards luncheon, probably about 1:00.
Around 1:00?
That's over.
Okay.
And goes until the end of the afternoon.
All right.
Lots of things going on.
So please stop by the business expo. All right. Item eight, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. And I will start with item A. Does council have any committee meetings they would like to announce this evening? Any committee items? Nothing tonight? So the complete schedule is JeffersonCityMo.gov. You can find committees and agendas listed on there as well. But it sounds like we might be at that time that we don't have a whole lot at the moment. Item... Or my announcements. Today I attended the naturalization ceremony at the Ike Skelton Training Center. And that was very exciting to see our new citizens sworn in today. So that was wonderful. And I will make an announcement of upcoming event, which is the State Fire Marshal Memorial Stair Climb. It's Saturday, October 19th at 9:00 a.m. in the Jefferson Building. And that is really an incredible event to watch the firefighters in their full gear walking the... To the top of the Jefferson Building multiple times that would equal the amount of stairs to the top of the World Trade Center. So it's a very emotional climb for them and also it's very encouraging to see that too. So that is Saturday, October 19th, which is also the same day as Lincoln's Homecoming Parade. So I will try to participate in both of those. Item B, the Missouri 2021 Bicentennial Moment. Would like to ask everybody to follow on Facebook, Missouri Bicentennial Paint for a Cause. If you're not already following Missouri Bicentennial Paint for a Cause, it's a project that's out there where you can paint a small triangle and they're having... They'll have thousands of people. It'll be like the largest mural and I think it'll be like a world record of... Or the largest number of people to paint on a mural. So I had the opportunity to paint on that last week. It will be in Jefferson City, I believe, next year on July 4th, but it is traveling around the state. So hopefully you can connect and paint on that as well. Does council have any announcements this evening? I know Porch Fest was over the weekend. Anything to report on Porch Fest?
I was there for a little bit. I know Laura and John stopped by and it was the first time that they held it in a neighborhood. And I think it went over extremely well. I've had a lot of positive feedback, given some people even came into the bank and peeked their head in and said that they really liked the atmosphere of having it at Forest Hill. So hopefully that continues to be a successful event. So I don't know if Laura or John want to add. I know anybody else.
That's fine. I agree.
Great. Looked like a...
A lot of kids.
Good. I'm glad that was a success. That's wonderful news. And Mr. Sanders is going to tell us about a survey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are still in our public involvement stage of our development of our comprehensive plan for the city. We have two things that people can still participate in. One is a survey that is on our website. It takes five minutes, irregardless of your IQ. And then we also have something neat we're doing. October 24th, right across the hall here at City Hall between 3:00 and 7:00, it's an open house land use visioning mapping session that we're going to have. So you can come anytime, spend some time with staff, go through our little exercise and participate in that. After that, we will be working hard on our plan and then next spring, we will hopefully be at the point to present a draft and start public involvement again on the plan. So with that, I would invite everybody to take an opportunity of one of those two activities.
Great. We will do it. And Chief Schofield is going to tell us about Fire Prevention Month.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The theme this month, actually this year, for the month of October is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape. Plan and Practice Your Escape." So that is the theme, the catchy phrase that we're trying to promote. But the idea is that everybody goes home and practices how to get out of your home if you need to quickly in the case of an emergency. And so we'll be out in full force this month throughout all the schools, both public and private, as well as some different club meetings. We'll have open houses and a lot of station tours with kids and preschools. But the idea is just to kind of help people, not only in our general fire safety term, but really focusing this month on escaping a home fire. And then, as we said last year, always close before you doze, even on your way out. Close those doors on the way out when you make your escape because that can also prevent fire spread and protect your property even though you have already exited the structure. So we'll be out this month. You'll see the fire safety trailer at all the different schools and you'll see the firefighters out in full force. And at the end of the month, actually on the 31st, there on Halloween, we're going to have yet again this year for the second time, the open house at the museum. So that was a successful event last year, had a lot of people stop in. Would love to have anybody who wants to come by. If we have any smoke detectors or carbon monoxide alarms left over from our program all month long, we'll have those there. And that's from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Fire Museum, 911 East Miller Street.
Thank you, Chief. And then item nine, we have Carolyn Wanjaro to give us a Lincoln University Student Representative update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council as a whole, just a reminder, incoming is coming up, it's going to be from October 12th to October 19th. They have different events planned for the whole entire week. And so I would like to invite you all, in the community as well, to come and join in with the Bo-Tanker family. Thank you.
Great. We're looking forward to that. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills. We have Dorothy Walker signed up to speak this evening. And you're welcome to speak for five minutes about any bill or resolution on the agenda. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Dorothy Walker. And I'm going to speak tonight about the bill pending 2019-053. This month is Meet the Blind Month nationally. And the reason I'm interested in this bill is because so many of the blind are not totally blind. In fact, most of them are not. They have low vision, severe dyslexia, something that prevents them from getting a driver's license. Yet they use many of these scooters and segways specifically I know about to get about town on those times when buses don't run. Also to go places where the buses don't. And right now, the Greenway is very important to them because they can kind of scoot between the busy roads and things where I don't know... Personally, I would be afraid to be riding one of these vehicles down Missouri Boulevard, even if it had a bike marked on it. But that's where most of the businesses are that people have to get to. Although I have noticed that if the Greenway was a little further, and I'm very pleased with that Greenway and what just the city has done with that, that more people who are not able to drive could get downtown also. I've been going to the workshops for the planning and I received the Buzz paperwork and it had the 1996 comprehension plan on there. And it said, "Under transportation, to enhance alternative surface transportation for the Jefferson City area residents and reduce the reliance on personal motor vehicles." And because I'm also a member of the National Federation of the Blind and this Sunday, we had our Meet the Blind Walkathon out at McKay Park, it's very... This is a very important bill to me because, like I said, so many of the people that I know are... Who are unable to get a license. I would like to suggest that we might be able to alter that bill just a little bit so that it's for maybe by age instead of by a driver's license. Because they all have ID cards. They all have... Go and get an ID card. But they can't get a driver's license because they can't pass an eye test. And possibly separate out some of those things because a motorized bike and an electric Segway are completely different horses. Those horses are completely different colors. I was a winter Texan for a while in the south, in Brownsville specifically, at the malls. The security guards ride the segways right through the malls, the indoor malls. And that way they're able to get from one place to another without having to put so many miles on their feet. And it's very helpful. Many people who can walk, but are... Who can't walk distances but can stand up, use the Segway as an alternative wheelchair. And it's used many ways like that as opposed to being a motorized bicycle. And I would just like to ask the council and the city to consider those changes to the rule, that maybe they be sorted out. And bear in mind that while the blind or those who are... Have low vision, are severe dyslexia in the city, are... They need to be able to get around on holidays when the buses don't run, in the evening when the buses don't run, and on the weekends when the buses don't run. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Walker? Councilwoman Ward?
Hi Ms. Walker. How are you?
Hi.
Could you tell me how fast a Segway goes?
Between five and top speed would be maybe 12. It's like a fast walk.
No, not any faster than 12 though?
No, they're not a... They're not a zippy kind of transportation. Just a fast walk.
Okay. And you mentioned an ID card that people could get. Could you explain that and what exactly the function of an ID card is?
It's a state ID card. It's that you get it at the driver's license bureau. When you're not able to get a driver's license, you get an ID card. It identifies you for voting or for the food banks or education, all kinds of things.
Okay. And that's at age 16, you can acquire one of those?
I don't know what... Yeah, I would think so, that that would be about it. I don't know the exact age limit on an ID card.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we will be taking this up under bills pending. And at that time, we might ask Councilor Mollman to address the part about state law and what things... I guess that particular item, if that were to be changed, then you know, we have our state reps that were here earlier. Those would be people that you could also talk to about the state law part of it. But we'll have Ryan address that when we have our discussion under item 13.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced. Item A, 2019-55.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by adding a stop sign to Bush Street before entering Virginia Street.
Mr. Bangy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would add a stop sign on Bush Street, which is a narrow alley that intersects Virginia Street, which is just north of Missouri Boulevard. There's a little confusion in terms of who has the right of way at that intersection. We believe that this will clear that up.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. 2019-56.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Evers &amp; Company Certified Public Accountants LLC for audit services.
Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We sent requests for proposals to 15 firms and we had four firms respond. One of the firms that responded, their response was not considered to be complete because they didn't have a firm fixed price. So the committee recommends Evers &amp; Company for the award based on not just the lowest price because of the number of hours that they are going to devote to this audit compared to the other audit firms' responses. So if you look at the total hours and the level of staff that are... For those... The highest levels of the staff that they are using and the hours that they're going to devote to it, the average hourly rate is $104 compared to 126 and 177 for the other two bidders. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. 2019-57.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the JC Veterans Pla...
2019-56.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Evers &amp; Company Certified Public Accountants LLC for audit services.
Mrs. Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We sent requests for proposals to 15 firms, and we had four firms respond. One of the firms that responded, their response was not considered to be complete because they didn't have a firm fixed price. So the committee recommends Evers &amp; Company for the award based on not just the lowest price because of the number of hours that they are going to devote to this audit compared to the other audit firms' responses. So if you look at the total hours and the level of staff that are, for those, the highest levels of the staff that they are using and the hours that they're going to devote to it, the average hourly rate is $104 compared to 126 and 177 for the other two bidders. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, thank you. 2019-57.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the J.C. Veterans Plaza Trust Fund.
Mr. Bangy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The Veterans Plaza Committee is looking at doing an expansion of the plaza by the addition of four additional raised areas for additional bricks. And so, we're looking to move funds from the, into a project so that they can hire a consultant to design those additional raised display areas.
Any questions? All right, thank you. 2019-58.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana testing and transportation facilities.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This bill would increase the number of zoning districts that medical marijuana testing and medical marijuana transportation services can be located. Currently, existing ordinance code allows it in the industrial areas, and this would permit it in the C2 area. This was originated through city staff upon reviewing what other uses can be permitted in C2. And it's gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was a five-to-one vote for moving this forward and recommending approval. There is no fiscal impact that we know of. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Would it be accurate to say that we expanded the opportunities for these facilities on the first round?
We expanded the dispensaries to C1 and C2. The other uses are permitted only in the industrial uses like these two currently are right now. It was the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to do that based on input from members of the public that came to the meeting.
Did any of the organizations that would fit within this, I know you said it was a staff recommendation, did any organization request additional opportunities?
Members of the real estate community conveyed their interest to us that, just like with the dispensaries, that just permitting it in one district was really kind of inhibiting the opportunities of where it can be located due to the federal regulations tied to mortgages and anything like that. If a property owner has any federal ties, they're probably not going to be permitting any medical marijuana uses at all in their facilities just because of the hindrance of the federal government's banking authority and other regulations.
But at Planning and Zoning, no one come to speak in favor of the move?
Not at, correct.
Or in opposition, but no one come to say this is really critical to?
Correct. There was no public input or correspondence to us on this issue.
I just find it interesting that we make changes that haven't been requested. Can, you have an example of a C2 area? I mean, I didn't go back and look at the map, but, I mean, what kind of areas are we talking about?
Along Missouri Boulevard would be a good example. Anywhere where UPS is, actually. They are a dispatch and delivery, kind of like what we're talking about with the medical marijuana here. So the C2 and C1 are the basic commercial opportunities where they are. It is not downtown.
I guess my follow-up comment would be, the state legislature spent a lot of time on this, this issue, trying to work with communities where these facilities could be and not be. And I understand there's a lot of interest within our state community to have access to these issues, to these products. But there was also some deference to cities saying, you can't be too restrictive, but they don't have to be on our main thoroughfares either, so. I'm just not in support of that change, and, you know, I appreciate the work that staff has done on it. But I think we have been, we have done what we have been asked to do by the voters, and we've made opportunities available. But some of the sites that we're talking about, just, I think there are people in our community that are on the opposite side of the issue that we need to take into account their feelings on this issue also, so. I guess that'd be my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. And nobody came forward to speak on either side. I mean, maybe now, you know, it's just being introduced, maybe people will come forward and give council some input as well on this bill too. So we would encourage, as we do for everything, encourage input from the public too. Any further questions or comments? 2019-59.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $145,844 agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Metropolitan Transportation Planning Services for the period of November 1, 2019 to October 31, 2020, reflecting Consolidated Planning Grant, CPG funds, as approved in the FY 2020 Unified Planning Work Program.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe this is actually one of our longest-running grants. I think we're going on year 16. I may be mistaken. But basically, it's an agreement between the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission and the city to fund the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. It is an 80/20 match. The city covers 20% of the grant amount, which would be about $27,000, and Cole County chips in an additional 5% of the local match. This helps fund the transportation planning activities that the MPO takes on. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, 2019-60.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a first amended and restated master license and cooperative agreement with Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Commission, Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Foundation, and Bicentennial Bridge LLC.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. This bill would amend the four-way master license and cooperative agreement between the city, the Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Foundation, Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Commission, and Bicentennial Bridge LLC. The amendments to this master license and cooperative agreement essentially accomplishes two things. The first thing is that it allows Bicentennial Bridge LLC to utilize a general contractor method of project delivery. Previously, the previous iteration of this agreement only allowed a project delivery method of construction manager at risk. That, that particular project delivery method has proved not to be fruitful, and so this expands the means by which a bridge construction contract can be secured. The second thing that this, that the changes accomplish, it addresses tax issues raised by the Department of Revenue. And in doing so, it specifies that the city would be the owner of the bridge during construction, and that the Bicentennial Bridge LLC would be an agent of the city, securing the contract to construct the bridge. But nevertheless, the city would be the owner of the bridge throughout the duration of the construction of the contract and afterwards. So it changes essentially who would own the bridge while the bridge is under construction. Previously, it was going to be the LLC who was going to be the owner of the bridge during construction, and then it would be deeded over to the city upon completion. This changes that so that the city is the owner of the bridge at the outset of the project. This agreement is in front of the Parks and Recreation at their commission meeting tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mollman. We also have with us this evening, Mr. Allen from the Chamber that is part of the Bridge Committee, and then Mr. Bob Gilbert from the engineering firm of Bartlett &amp; West, if there are other questions too. Does council have any questions tonight? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mollman. And thank you all for being here as well. Item 13, bills pending, 2019-49.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing all city retained easements in the vacated right-of-way of the unnamed alley located between the 900 block of West Main Street and West High Street.
Mr. Bangy.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Missouri American Water owns the area in question, and they are going to be expanding their facility by the addition of a clear well, which will be constructed over the top of the vacated alley. At the current time, there's a sewer main in that alley that basically serves Missouri American Water. Their plan is to reroute the sewer line, and that would become a private line, and ultimately, the sewer line as exists today would, would no longer exist.
Any questions? Deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey? Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-52.
Amending the 2018-2019 and 2019-2020 budgets by re-titling one administrative technician position and one deputy court clerk position to two deputy court clerk, one and two positions within the Law Department.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. This bill changes two positions at the municipal court. Currently, there is three positions at the municipal court, a municipal court administrator, a deputy court clerk, and an administrative technician. This bill would change the deputy court clerk and administrative technician position into two deputy court clerk positions, and then creating a career ladder within that job classification in which deputy court clerk one could, could advance career ladder into a deputy court clerk two. This is anticipation of a, of an anticipated vacancy in that, in that position, the deputy court clerk position. We believe that this is a good move for the municipal court in that it can create a career ladder which leads to, we believe, stability in the positions and gives the city more flexibility to hire to its needs. The promotion from a two to a one will be based on a combination of education, experience, and, and training.
Thank you. Any council discussion or questions? Councilwoman Wiseman?
I have asked this question before, and so I'm beating a dead horse again. But just, just to be clear, this is no fiscal impact on us right now, correct?
Correct.
And this is not going to have a fiscal impact on us next year?
No.
And this is, this is more about, instead of having two people at different positions, creating a career ladder for people?
Correct. It's, it's essentially, what was brought to my attention is that in that small of a group, it might have, make a lot of sense to have a hierarchical organization in which you had a clear one, a clear two, and a clear three. That is not how the municipal court administrator ran the court. Essentially, she had, you know, two people kind of specializing in different areas and, and would rely on them for the different tasks that they're kind of specializing in. And so, so it thought it would be a better approach to have a, more of a pyramid organization as opposed to a one, two, three, top-down organization. And so, we believe that this is an improvement from a functional organizational standpoint. And to reiterate the point, we believe this change would either be revenue neutral for the next few fiscal years, or it could be potentially a revenue, or, sorry, a cost decrease because this allows an opportunity to have two deputy court clerk ones who are both at a 10 classification. And so currently, what we have is a, is a 12 and a 10. So at any given time, you could have two 10s, a 12 and a 10, or two 12s. We do not anticipate having any type of situation where we would have two 12s because that is, that is, the progression from a one to a two would have to be something that, that would have to be essentially earned and attained through a combination of experience, training, and education.
All right, Councilman Mahalovich.
This is a broader question, not particularly for the courts. But are we creating a precedent here? The term career ladder, I've not heard used when we did our compensation survey in 2016. So maybe, maybe Steve, our city administrator, could, could address. Is this, is this a precedent, or is this, is this just a term being used as a natural progression from a one or a two? How would this play out in other departments?
We do have career ladders in other departments. Some of them have been established for a long time. For example, police officer one, two, and three, like that. And then we also implemented some other career ladders in some other positions. There've been several that we've talked about that we haven't brought to council yet. They have some, had some discussion at one of the committees. So we do have career ladders, and I think it may have been partially addressed, at least, in the compensation and plan, but I can look that up to be sure. But we do have some.
Any further, Councilman Graham?
I'm trying to wrap my head all around a one, to two, to 10, to 12, and all of that. So I think you got me a little confused, but I'm gonna try to get, I'm gonna try to gather this together. So for example, the police officer one, two, and three. So we have a police officer who's a one and goes to a two, to the next ladder. There's no fiscal impact to that officer going to a two?
Well, so I can't speak specifically to the police officers, but generally, when there's a move from a one and a two, I believe that there is an increase in salary. And so, so there is a fiscal impact when there is a progression through the range into a new classification. So, so when I am saying that there is no fiscal impact, what I am talking about is immediate fiscal impact for this particular budget year, for the upcoming budget year. But there could be
Ah-huh.
...a fiscal impact if, for whatever reason, you have stability in the position, and two people have earned their way into a deputy court clerk two position, then you would have a situation where two people would be paid at the 12 position. Now, I, I think part of the, part of the reasoning behind that is that that is a good thing because you have two people that have experience, training, education, that are, you know, helpful to the job and helpful to the customers that they serve. And in exchange for that, there is a fiscal impact. And so, in the future, there could be a situation, in this particular situation, where there are two 12s, and that would, that would be an increase in the personnel services budget light item. But I think, but believe that, you know, that is in recognition of compensating them for the time, education, and training, and, and can be planned for because, you know, it's a progression that people are working toward. So, so yes, absolutely, there is a fiscal trade-off. So when I talk about it's being fiscal, fiscally neutral, that is for immediately upcoming budgets. And I believe that we would know well in advance when those increases are, are going to, to hit. So, don't get me wrong, there, there could be situations where there is an increase in how much is being dedicated to personnel services for the municipal court according to this change. But I'm confident in saying that would be several years in the future.
Any further questions or comments? Or, Mr. Crowe?
And could I just add that it would be subject to city administrator approval? Correct.
Any further council discussion or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey? Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2019-53.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the definition of a motorized bicycle.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you. This bill would amend definitions within the city code defining the operation of a motorized bicycle. Currently, city code recognizes that a motorized bi, a motorized bicycle is a two-wheeled or three-wheels device having fully operative pedals capable of propulsion by human power. This would amend that definition and essentially allow devices that are, do not have pedals. It would essentially change the definition of motorized vehicle, bicycle to any type of motorized transit device that has an automatic transmission and a motor with a capacity of no more than 50 cc's or produces less than three gross brake horsepower and is propelling, capable of propelling the device no more than 30 miles an hour on level ground. So essentially, what we have is a motorized bicycle definition. This, these changes would change that definition to allow things like electric scooters, segways, and various other types of motorized propulsion systems that go less than 30 miles an hour and have this limited horsepower definition.
for operation of motorized bicycles not only on a seat, but also where the device is mounted on a footboard. So essentially, what this does is it updates our codes and allows, under the definition of motorized bicycle, other types of electronic devices which are limited in speed and in Under state law, these types of, in order to be operated on a public street, under state law, a driver's license is necessary. So, and also, under the city code, motorized bicycles are not allowed to be operated on the sidewalks. However, I will note that by Parks and Commission bylaw, motorized bicycles are allowed to be operated on the greenway. Greenways are generally much wider than sidewalks, usually eight to 10 feet or more in width. And so the Parks and Recreation Commission, in their capacity and in their control over the greenway, have allowed these types of devices to be used on the greenway. So while it cannot be used on a standard sidewalk, they would be able to use on the greenway and also on public streets, but only with a driver's license, and that is state law that requires a driver's license for these devices to be operated on public streets.
Thank you, Mr. Mollman. Are there questions? Council discussion? Councilwoman Ward?
Where would electric wheelchairs fall?
Electric wheelchair is essentially an assistive medical device, and they are not covered on this. That is something that the city would, is required to be operated on the city sidewalks. So I think that is a different category of device than what we're talking about here. And generally, a motorized wheelchair is gonna go in the, probably, you know, from one to probably no more than 10, but closer probably to the five or six mile-per-hour range.
When I Googled, it said 10 to 20.
10 to 20 for electric wheelchair.
Yeah, Segway was 5 to 12.5, and electric scooter was 20 to 30. So do we have any type of ordinance regarding electric wheelchairs?
No, I do not believe we have the capacity, the authority, to really regulate electric wheelchairs.
So they're allowed either on city street or sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And are we, like, governed or married to the state law? Can we come up with our own?
We cannot allow operation on the city street without a driver's license. That is, the driver's license laws are bound by state law. We cannot do anything different to that.
If there was proof of some type of ID that was keeping them from getting a license? Because we've heard that there's transportation issues in town and...
Yeah, so that would be a matter of state law. We cannot change what is required to operate a device on public streets. But we can dictate what type of devices are allowed on the sidewalks.
So we could say a Segway could be?
We could say a Segway is allowed on the sidewalk.
Or a device that's under a certain miles per hour?
Yes.
All right. I'll see if council wants to entertain such...
Councilman Mahalovich?
Now, the spin scooters, the people operating those need a driver's license?
They would need a driver's license, and they need to be operated either on a street or on a greenway. Now, arguably, you would not need a driver's license to operate a spin scooter on the greenway. That is not a, that's not a public street.
The second part of this question is, the person that brought this up was blind or sight impaired, and we really can't solve that person's problem, as it turns out, because they were riding their Segway on the city or county right-of-way and were stopped by a police officer and said, "You can't do this." And I don't think they were sighted, but that's what brought this issue up. So there's no resolve for this particular case unless we allow some sort of way that this person using a Segway that is visually impaired to be on our sidewalks. I mean, that would be the only remedy, right?
Correct. The gentleman that brought this issue to the forefront, yes, this does not address the particular thing that he would like to have seen addressed. I'm fairly confident in saying, but he did bring to our attention probably what is a hole in our regulations that this ordinance seeks to fill.
Recognizing that, I don't know if, is there a way to us to allow it on our sidewalks in a limited capacity? Because I don't think that a lot of people would qualify for the use of segways on our sidewalks. But that may open up a whole new realm of issues that we'd not have addressed in the past.
Right. I think there is a way for the city council to write into a code a way that would allow something like a Segway, and you wouldn't use the name, but you would define it by, essentially, operational capacity, you know, allow those types of devices on the sidewalks. Now, going 10 to 12 miles an hour, I don't agree with the assessment that that is a fast walk, that is a six-minute mile for the runners in the crowd. That is, that's going at a pretty good clip. And so the question that's in front of the city council is a device that is capable of going speeds, sustained speeds, that is equivalent to what's probably a sprint for a lot of people. Is that something that we want to allow on the sidewalks, which are only three to four, you know, three to four, five feet in width? It's a public safety question. I don't think there's a right answer. It's just kind of balancing out the risks and rewards to the, you know, to the general traveling public.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Along the same line, I mean, first of all, I don't know if I've ever actually seen a Segway or a similar device being used in town, but I certainly believe that they are in some cases. I wonder if in this way to find a solution, if we were to allow such devices on sidewalks, limited to individuals with disabilities, and where the speed, the maximum speed attained is really no, not that the device couldn't go faster, but that the device is not being used at a speed faster than, you know, surrounding foot traffic, essentially going with the speed of the surroundings. I mean, that seems a reasonable solution to me, and it would certainly, you know, benefit the individuals in our community who would need that allowance while hopefully not endangering anyone else who's sharing the sidewalk. Thank you.
Mr. Mollman?
If I may, just from an administrative standpoint, essentially what you're talking about is a licensing system, essentially where someone would come in and say, "I would like a exception or a waiver to the general rule that I can't use a Segway on the sidewalks." Administratively, we'd have to think about how we would do that and how we are judging that. From my standpoint, essentially, if anyone came in and asked for it, I would say, "Let's go ahead and give it to them." And then at that point in time, what is, what's really the point of the licensing system? Because I just want to raise what that comment implicates, that there may be some administrative hurdles to that.
I mean, you could also see a way of taking away the, removing the, piece limiting it to individuals with disabilities and simply limit any use of such devices to a normal walking pace. Yeah, certainly not looking to create unnecessary headaches.
I think I saw Fitzwater first and then Mahalovich.
Who would enforce the?
Be the police.
We're gonna create, get something else for the... Seems like the broader question is, do we want vehicles or these types of units on our sidewalk? I mean, I assume everybody in town obeys the speed limits. We've got signs up, so, I mean, people are not going to obey. There's not gonna be any way to control... I get it, and I totally support trying to meet people's needs. This is a tough one. I mean, anybody that's ever walked out of their office building and had joggers go by, I mean, that's human bodies, not even a machine. I mean, they're on top of you, or bicycles, or these scooters, even though we say they're supposed to be on the road. So I understand and, you know, I appreciate the plight of folks, but to me, the question is, do I want these units on the sidewalks? And my response is, no, because there's not gonna be a way to monitor the speed. We can't dictate, we try to dictate cars, but people exceed what we say is the appropriate level because of, they're late for an appointment or whatever the reasons are. So I would not be in favor of modifying it. I mean, again, I appreciate the plight, but there are just some things that's very difficult to address, and it seems to me our police department has things other to do than monitoring segways on sidewalks.
Thank you. Councilman Mahalovich?
Well, I think I support the bill in front of us, and maybe not to hijack it with other discussion, but if one of us asks for, a reasonable approach would be to draft something up and have it go through public safety and public works and planning. And if those subcommittees see it fit to come to this council, I think it'd be thoroughly vetted. But otherwise, I'm prepared to go ahead and vote what's in front of us, and if council wants to get with the law department or individuals and bring it through the process, I'd be supportive of that as a process to get around, get us to voting tonight on this.
Any further questions, discussion? Okay. Councilman Graham?
Just a question for Councilman Mahalovich. So you're suggesting what?
I'm suggesting that if a person feels strongly about a bill that would allow for the impaired to be on our sidewalks, they would bring it up through the public works and planning and public safety meetings, and then it'd be vetted there, and then it could come here as a different bill than what we're looking at right now.
That's why I was confused, a different bill other than the one we're gonna vote on tonight. Okay, got you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Kimna?
No.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item fourteen on the informal calendar, we have twenty nineteen forty.
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter thirty-two, revising the duties and responsibilities of property owners regarding sidewalks.
Is there a motion to remove this from the informal calendar?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And then we will...
If I could get clarification, is that for...
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, sorry, no, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm terribly sorry.
I think I got ahead of myself. I'll let Councilman Hensley make the motion.
Sure. I'd move that we remove Bill twenty nineteen dash oh four oh from the informal calendar for discussion, and I will have a, if this motion passes, I'll have a subsequent motion regarding a pending substitute bill.
Currently, that is to remove this from the informal. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And at this time, we'll entertain a motion to take up a substitute.
Thank you. I would move that we take up substitute Bill twenty nineteen oh four oh B.
Thank you. Councilman Hensley, is there a second?
Second.
And any further discussion to take up the substitute? And if so, then we'll discuss that substitute. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so at this time, we will take up substitute twenty nineteen oh four oh B. And, let's see, that would be, who would that be to take that? Is that you, Ryan? No.
I believe Mr. Bangy might be most helpful in the discussion.
Okay. Mr. Bangy, anything to add to that tonight?
Yes, the substitute was discussed at the Public Works and Planning Committee level last month, and so the text that is part of the substitute for this particular portion of the bill is unchanged, actually, from what was originally proposed several meetings ago when it was first introduced.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion or deliberation? Okay. Roll call, please.
Hussey?
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
No.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Five to four. Do we need six on that one?
So the ordinance, it needs a vote of six. So although it got more votes, the motion fails, or the bill fails.
Okay. Bill fails. Okay, twenty nineteen forty-six.
An ordinance amending Section eight dash thirteen A overtime and compensatory time of the Personnel Policing Manual.
Mr. Mollman?
Did you want to keep...
Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself there, too, so it looks like we will leave that on the informal. Item fifteen, resolutions, we've taken up twenty nineteen eleven. Item B, resolution twenty nineteen twelve.
A resolution of the city of Jefferson, extending the adopted disadvantaged business enterprise goal for fiscal year twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen to include FY twenty twenty for FTA Section fifty-three oh seven Transit Operating Funds and directing its implementation.
Mrs. Miller?
Ms. Madam Mayor, as the clerk stated, this is an extension of our DBE goal to include an extra year, which would be the federal fiscal year twenty.
Thank you. Any, or do we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen twelve?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion or council deliberation? Roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Resolution passes. Twenty nineteen thirteen.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute Amendment Number One to the restricted gift agreement with Mrs. Betty J. DeLonge, trustee of the Betty J. DeLonge Revocable Trust dated December ninth, nineteen ninety-two.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This resolution makes changes to a restricted gift agreement between Mrs. Betty J. DeLonge, the city of Jefferson, and the Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Foundation. The original agreement provided that construction of the bridge to Adrian's Island would commence by execution of the contract for construction by August first. This extends that deadline to November first.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen thirteen?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Kimna?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Forgot to mention, we do have Mr. Allen from the Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Gilbert, again, from Bartlett West Engineering. Thank you all for being here for those bills this evening and your work on the project. Item sixteen, we have no one signed up for presentations. Item seventeen, is there any council and staff discussion on presentation topics? Item eighteen, any new business? Item nineteen, any unfinished? And reminder for the next council meeting that we'll be wearing pink to that for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And item twenty, is there a motion to adjourn?
Now, go back?
Yes.
Real quick, I know she's gone now. Caroline had mentioned about Lincoln University's homecoming. I also want to say that during homecoming for that Monday night, Murphy's Ford will be in concert for a United Way fundraiser event, so I hope that you all will come out and support. I think this is the first concert that they would have put on in the city of Jefferson, even though they're from this area, so that is Monday night.
So that is Monday night, the fourteenth, at seven PM in Richmond Auditorium. Tickets are only $10. So Murphy's Ford will be in concert during Lincoln University's homecoming on next week.
I will definitely be there. Thank you, Councilman Graham. All right, motion to adjourn? Second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you.